You're watching HFO TV, your partner in Pacific Northwest multifamily investing. HFO TV is brought to you by Pacific Exteriors Northwest apartment siding contractors with nearly 30 years of experience, providing exceptional quality and service to multifamily and residential owners, and by Gantry Incorporated, the nation's largest independent mortgage banking firm.
Welcome back to HFO TV. I'm Greg Frick, partner at HFO Investment Real Estate. And today we have with us candidate running for Multnomah County position. Thank you for coming. We've talked to the dean before multiple times, but it's good. We've got an election coming up and when we're recording this in about 30 days. So it'd be great to hear, I mean, I think a lot of our audience kind of understands kind of the political landscape here in terms of you've got the city, which we've talked about before, you've got the state, but you know, how this Multnomah County works and there's metro, maybe talk a little bit of that, then we'll get kind of in your history and then kind of, you know, what you're running on and kind of the big change looking important. So thanks for taking the time. I know you're busy with the election ramping up. So kind of tell people how the Multnomah County positions are structured, then we'll get into in deep on, on, you know, some specific topics.
Yeah, let me peel back that onion of all the different government entities we have here. So, you know, the city is going through a transition right now. They'll have a whole new government, a new city council that's going to be pretty large and a new voting system. The county is still five commissioners that are going to be voting on whatever the businesses before the county. There's still a primary coming up here in May 21st unlike city. And there might be a general election if people don't win their elections at the primary. The county is in charge of, you know, basically human services. So if you're looking, you know, at some of the bigger topics of the day, such as homelessness, drug addiction, mental illness, that those are all within the purview of the county and the county has both the money for that. The taxes go from metro to the county or from property taxes to the county. And also they set the long-term policies.
For that, for those funds, for the policy towards like mental health, addiction services, that's the county and a lot of people mistakenly, you know, complain about the city, but they, you know, sometimes say, hey, look back, they've got to get, it goes through the county first.
Yeah. When I ran for office two years ago for city council, city council got a lot of blame for things and the mayor as well, rightfully so in many ways. But when it comes to what you're seeing play out in our streets, the humanitarian crisis that we're seeing in our streets, you know, the syringes, the fentanyl, all that sort of thing, that is the county not doing its job. But also even public safety, I mean, when you think about it, people think, okay, well, the mayor's in charge of the police bureau, so that's public safety. But, you know, the county is in charge of the budget for the district attorney's office. The county is in charge of the budget for the sheriff's office and the jails. The county is working with the judges and the DA's office and the public defender to set long-term policies. So, you know, a lot of people are reading the news about individuals getting arrested over and over, drug dealers that are back on the streets over and over. Sometimes they go back to the very same place they dealt, just to get arrested and then they go back that very same day. Those are policies that the county is in charge of.
And it's interesting thing is, you know, my history here, I don't remember, and it may be because of some of the things that are happening in the city where it's now the light is being shined a little brighter on the county itself and some of the things they're doing that, you know, again, it's usually, you know, the state polit-, you know, state elections and the local with the city, but the county kind of runs under the radar. This is one of the first times I feel like on the election side that the county is getting some spotlight about, hey, it's important about who's in those seats. Maybe it's five people and it's by district. So it's not like a citywide like the city is. So you're running for a district. Are all five seats up?
Four of the seats up are up. So it's a very unique time. Normally three seats would be up right now, but in North Portland, the person that has that seat is running for the, or there's, there's one current commissioner that's running for office and so that seat is up. So we have four seats. The only seat that's not up right now is the, the chief commissioner, who is Jessica Vega Peterson, and she's in charge.
And then on the setup, we've talked about this before, the setup with, you know, how much control does, you know, you get in, there's, you know, the seats there right now feels as if Jessica has a lot of control on the agenda with the county. Kind of, you know, what's kind of the plan? How does that change? Or because again, I think a lot of people are kind of, I would say upset about kind of status quo, it feels that way that we're not seeing a lot of change. What do you do regarding that?
People are furious about the status quo.
I try to be polite about it, but yes, yeah.
And rightfully so. If I, if I weren't, if I were to talk to a person that's not mad right now, I'd really want to know why, because we have the highest tax in the country, unless you're making more than 25 million, but we can't even fix our potholes. We can't help people on the streets and we can't, you know, have enough police officers to patrol and make sure that there's not crime. So, I mean, there's plenty of reasons to be upset right now. The county has, you know, five commissioners, the chair and the four elected from the district. So I'm running a district one, the west side and central east side up until about 40th, 42nd street, depending on where you live. And so the difficulty is that they're not working well together. And we see this all the time. So, you know, in the winter time, the shelters were closed during an ice storm and the county commissioner blamed the city because the city didn't provide enough volunteers supposedly. Our own mayor's office said that the county was mismanaging its shelters. Imagine that, our own mayor's office saying that the county was not managing its shelters well. And between them, within the county commission, they've actually had to do a retreat at one of the McMinnimans to figure out ways to work better together because they're really not communicating, they're not voting in a cohesive way, they're not planning for the future. It's very much a reactive commission at this point.
And I've, and I've never seen, even the commission, I've never seen the dysfunction between the city and the county like this. It's just been, you know, it's, I don't want to say laughable, criminal, whatever you want to say. I mean, you've got stuff happening on the streets, you've got people dying on the streets, services need to be provided and they're pointing fingers about, you know, who was right and who was wrong. It just seems, it seems just crazy.
I mean, Governor Kotek withheld, I believe, $2 million of homeless funding from the county because she said, I don't understand what your plan is. And we're about eight years into a housing emergency, if that's what you want to call homelessness. And, and imagine that our own governor is trying to give away money, giving away money to all the different counties, looks at Multnomah County and says, I don't even know how you're going to use it. I'm going to give it to another county. That's the difficulty we're having here, poor planning and then not being able to work together with the state and the city to get things done.
So let's talk a little bit about, you know, what, for people that don't know, maybe don't, you know, what was your, kind of what's your history and what got you interested in politics and kind of how we got to this place today?
Yeah. So I'll go all the way back. So I was born in Kiev, Ukraine, and my family, you know, had good jobs there, but they knew it was better on, in the west. So we were able to leave back in 1979. And I was six years old when we left the former Soviet Union. We were stateless for a little while, you know, we first were dropped off in Austria, then they were told to go to Italy. When you left the USSR at that point in time, you were only allowed to take a few suitcases with you and only convert basically $90 into hard currency. So we had to leave most of our possessions, most of our money behind and came with absolutely nothing. We stayed in Italy until the United States gave us permission to come here. And then we arrived in the United States, not speaking any English whatsoever. So I started school right away. I was seven by the time I got to the States, started school, didn't know a lick of English, you know, learned English watching TV basically. And, and then the same thing with my parents, you know, my dad's electrical engineer, but he didn't speak English. So his took odd jobs to get by. I mean, he didn't know about welfare, didn't know, he thought if he didn't, you know, put food on the table, we'd all starve. So he was working as a coat checker, various odd jobs. And we moved around a lot because of that. So from job to job, place to place, we started off in the Midwest area, Pennsylvania, Cleveland, Ohio. Then there was an oil boom in Texas. So we moved to Texas. Then there was an oil bust in Texas. So we moved around a little bit more. My mother went to community college and became a nurse. You know, it's, it's an immigrant story.
A little bit of a touch of all the United States. I mean, you went all the east, all the way to west over here.
Yeah, yeah. And I had that itch, you know, I went to law school, got a job and then decided, you know, I still want to see the United States. So I've lived in New Orleans, Washington DC, Southern California, moved around quite a bit, came to Portland and fell in love with the city. It was about 10 years ago when this happened and decided to stay here. So at that point in time, I was a federal administrative law judge and I was managing the office in Houston and the management position came up open in Portland. So I transferred over to Portland, decided this was going to be the city I was going to stay in. And then, you know, things turned a little bit weird, weirder than it normally is. And so I decided, hey, I'm going to roll up my sleeves and help out. So either the mayor or city council appointed me to various committees, you know, committees overseeing the police, disability commission, most recently the charter commission, which is a story in itself. And, 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 you know, and then I was involved in neighborhood associations. I'm the president of Goose Hollow Neighborhood Association, I'm president of a coalition that's going to be about 33 neighborhoods fairly soon. And you hear all these stories about lots of people throughout Portland that are trying to roll up their sleeves and help in various ways, whether it's they're out there, you know, giving food and water to individuals living in our streets, trying to get them into shelters, cleaning up trash, cleaning up graffiti. And, and the chorus that you hear is, you know, we're trying to do our best to help out, but our city and county are not listening to us. And that's what kind of got me involved in politics. I'm like, there's so many people that are, you know, trying to help and they have good ideas. Why are somehow our local governments always seemingly choosing the worst possible idea?
Right.
And, and then so that's, that's where I'm at right now, because I think the county is where I can do the most good. I think if you want to see a dramatic impact in livability here in Portland and economics here in Portland, in quality of life and safety issues here in Portland, it's, it's the county. They need three votes in that county. They haven't had, you know, a practical group of people voting together in a long time. And so if we can get some, you know, rational candidates elected, it's a low bar, but rational candidates elected, I think we can do a lot of good.
Well, I also think, like you said, like I said before, I think the, there's more people looking at their decisions now. And I think there's a recognition that it's as important a position of who we're going to put in there as opposed to, you know, I think if you would ask people 10 years ago, they probably wouldn't have been able to name who their county commissioner was in their district. They might've known who the chair is, but they probably didn't know who the county commissioner is. And I think that's starting to change where there's a recognition of, like you said, just the example of money, the state had to pull back and say, until you get your stuff together, we're not going to allocate this. You know, we know we have all these problems. So it's great that you're doing that. What kind of, what are your, you know, your pillars of your, your campaign on the change side? And we've been talking a lot about safety and homelessness, but what are some of the other ones you're going to highlight?
Yeah. I mean, it's pretty basic. It's what has worked in other places.
Right.
So we've seen a pretty much a 50% increase in homelessness in the last three years. What we are also seeing is a decrease in homelessness in Washington County. They've said they've already solved their chronic homelessness problem. We're seeing a 65 decrease in percentage in homelessness in Clackamas County. Other cities have been successful. So if you look at Boise, if you look at Salt Lake City, if you look at Houston, if you look at Miami, those are all cities that experienced a pretty dramatic increase in cost of living, but they were able to also decrease the amount of homelessness that they had, the chronic homelessness, the tent camping that we're seeing here. And so, you know, number one thing is get people off the streets into this menu of shelter options that we have in order to provide them those services, mental services, mental health services, drug addiction services, and housing services. We know it's not a one size fits all.
Right.
So there are some people that could probably benefit and go directly into housing. And if, you know, there's housing vouchers right now, rental vouchers, things that the county's already spending millions of dollars to keep people in housing or get them put back in housing.
I mean, they're not maybe the most efficient in getting it out, but they are doing something. But it just, yeah, it always felt like it's a one size fits all with them. And they're so heavily on home first with a lot of, you know, we've talked about this before about, you know, that may work for some segment, but not everybody needs the same kind of menu of options.
Exactly. And, and, you know, that's been the separation between the county and the city. The county's been a housing first.
Right.
And expecting people living on their streets, some people with very severe psychoses and schizophrenia, some people with really serious drug addiction problems, and expecting them to, you know, pick themselves up off the streets, go to the services, get signed up for housing and then have that housing available. They're missing that whole middle area. So the city in the meantime is spending tens of millions of dollars on safe rest villages. Let me ask you this. How much do you think per person per night we're spending at a safe rest village?
Oh, I think, I mean, we did the math. I mean, we were, the one where it was, I think the equation came out to $4,100 a month. And that include, that did not include the actual, that was just the services, but and I don't think include food either. It was just, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty close. It was, yeah. $230 a night for a safe rest village. Imagine that. So if it's just a housing issue, you think we can spend that 6,000 a month on an apartment in the Pearl and, and, you know, be done with that. But, but it's not. It's a very severe mental illness, drug addiction that is a driving force behind a lot of these people and living and suffering and dying oftentimes in our streets. So get them into services by putting them into designated shelter spots. And as I said, right now, there's the traditional kind of shelters that the county runs. There's high barrier shelters, which that, you know, you can't use drugs on premise. The county has not wanted to fund those historically for whatever ideological reasons, but Iby Lakes has great success. So we have a lot of options from, you know, the, the tiny home on a safe rest village to a high barrier shelter where you can get drug addiction services and then get a job and then, you know, go back into housing. So get them into that, have the providers be there to, to help individuals rather than expecting the, either the providers to go to every single encampment or people living in the streets to go to the providers themselves. And then get the people the services that they want. That's the number one thing that we're missing right now. That's where other people have success. And we need to work together better with all the contractors that the county has. I mean, the Joint Office of Homeless Services is a mess. The auditor has done two reports showing that, you know, first of all, the numbers they have are not real numbers. That, that basically if you go in there for, say a needle exchange, they put you down as being housed. So our own auditor from the county said that 20% of the numbers were not even housing numbers that they were claiming. And then, and then the rest of the numbers, they couldn't tell whether they were housed for one day or one year. And then, and then we need to have our service providers work together. We have over 100 individuals that are being, or 100 organizations that are being funded by the county, but there's no accountability as to how the money's being spent, what they're doing, how they're keeping their records, if they're working together or working separately. And, and we know that's failing us. So, you know, basically like what anybody with a business would do, find out, you know, what the issues are, keep track of them, find out what the problems are, solve them and make sure we have adequate tracking so we know what to fix. And if you fail, start over with something new. Don't keep on funding the failures.
That's what I've noticed. It seems like there's almost a reluctance to change course, which is, you know, if you try something, it doesn't work, it's okay to change it, but there's this steadfast, we're going to try this regardless, come hell or high water, this is what we're going to do irregardless of the, you know, the negative effects. And it just seems like there was no idea like, hey, look, have you looked at what, what's really happening? Is this really working? Maybe we try something else. And it didn't seem like we could get any, even buying to look at other things. It was just, it was very strange when you would talk to people in the county because you could sense the frustration with everybody else.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's definitely a lot of frustration and, and everybody knows that the system's broken. I mean, I, I talked to a lot of people and, and I, I want to say maybe a handful out of thousands have said, you know, it's probably okay. We need to just keep on funding it. And, you know, measure 110 is okay. We need to keep on going down that road. But most everybody is like, why am I paying such high taxes and we can't solve these problems? Why is Seattle looking better than Portland is right now? Why is San Francisco looking better than Portland right now? Or I went to Chicago, or I went to Europe, or wherever it is. The stories are always like, I got off the plane, I looked around, I'm not seeing what's happening here in Portland. So, you know, the, the thing is, is we've been very much ideologically driven here, it seems, you know, it's like housing first, this is the model, this is what I want to do without getting people involved in that process. You know, working with the neighborhood associations, we worked on, you know, a lot with some of these shelter options that have been available. And you know what? No one comes and asks the people that are working and living in those areas, like, how do you feel about this? How do you want to be involved? What kind of rules would you like to make sure it doesn't impact you and your kids and your business? It's always been, I know, from the government side, I know what we need to do, we need to do this. And, you know, you can, you can disagree with this, but it won't matter.
Right.
What we really need to do is involve our neighbors and make sure that we get that input and help that we need.
How do you, how do you kind of repair the, the city-county relationship that seems, you know, again, it's going to be vital that they work together, but it seems so, you know, frayed right now, but what's happened the last, I want to say five or six years. How, what's, you know, is there a plan to try to do that if you get in? And I'm curious, are you getting feedback from, because you know, people in the city as to, you know, we're looking for a new kind of modus operandi and how we're going to operate moving forward?
Yeah. So, I mean, there's already a plan. So I'm already reaching out to people who will be elected and making sure that we're working together. As of today, I'm endorsed by three of the main mayoral candidates. So Mingus Maps, Rene Gonzalez, and Keith Wilson have endorsed my campaign for the county commission. And Carmen Rubio said that she's not endorsing right now. She's staying neutral. To me, that's a victory in itself. And then several of the people running for county commission and other districts have endorsed me. So Jesse Burke from District Two, North Portland, she owns a hotel in Old Town, but she actually lives in North Portland. She's endorsed my campaign. Vince Jones Dixon in Gresham City Council, but he's running for county commission on the east side. He's endorsed my campaign. His election is going to be pretty easy. So he's definitely in. Jesse's going to have a little bit of a fight up there in North Portland. There's a few good candidates, but, and so it's, it's that ability to work together. And then several of the people running for city council have also endorsed my campaign. You know, most notable will be Dan Ryan, who will probably get reelected to city council, but also on the west side, people that are running. That's because I've built those relationships over the years, working with them on different fields, that building that trust, building that ability, knowing that we can work together. So when I'm in the county commission there and some versions elected to offices, then we'll be able to keep that partnership going.
And then how long, how long is for people to know, how long is the county commission seat? Is it, I mean, how often are you up for, like it gets an odd year?
Every four years.
It's every four years. But typically you don't have that many rolling on each, you know, each election cycle.
Yeah, it's two or three. And, you know, the next one will be the, I guess, one of the terms must be a partial term. So two years from now, the county chair will be up for reelection and another county seat.
And what have you from, you know, like I said, I know you ran with city council. I mean, have you kind of changed a little bit in terms of some of your view, or what have you learned in the last couple of years that's, you know, even given you more energy to get in there and try and help? Or, you know, is anything surprised you like, oh, I didn't really think about this. This is somewhere I can lend a hand?
Well, you know, my campaign has always been about bringing communities together. So I'm very proud that, you know, I'm endorsed by business organizations, you know, multifamily organizations, realtors, those sort of things. But I'm also endorsed by unit members, small businesses, union organizations. It's, it's that ability to bring, you know, different people from, you know, different walks of life together, because that's what we need right now. You know, about 10 years ago, Portland was, was great. Jobs were plentiful, taxes were coming in, and you could probably solve a lot of problems without needing to work together. That's what we saw in our city council. That's what we saw in our county. A lot of finger pointing, east versus west, landlords versus renters, businesses versus employees. There was a lot of finger pointing divisiveness. You know, we have a bunch of crises right now. We can't do that. So, you know, that's building upon my past campaign. And then also, one thing that I think is also very important is bringing voices that have not been heard to the city and the county. A lot of people are upset, but they don't know how to advocate for their needs. So over the last year, I've, together with partners and neighborhood associations and, and small businesses, have held several forums on forums on measure 110, forums on how the city and the county can work together. So Jessica Vega Peterson and Ted Wheeler were at that forum. Forums on behavioral health where we had individuals from the city and the county and mental health providers come in and talk about what it is that people are saying.
Bringing more stakeholders in as a communication as opposed to, I want to say like an echo chamber, where you've got the same people making the same, same decisions about the same policies again and again. And are they really looking at enough stakeholders to really make an informed decision as to where the policy should go?
And giving people an opportunity to educate themselves and also an opportunity to advocate for their needs. So not everybody's going to wake up and go to city council at nine o'clock and, you know, testify for their few minutes, or no one does at the county pretty much. But that's what we need to do. Those people that know what their needs are and those solutions that are very mad that, you know, we're, we're sort of being hijacked by maybe 5% of the population that is ideologically driven versus common sense and making sure that the rest of us that are out there, you know, just wanting our kids to be able to walk to school without any problems, you know, that, that those people are heard.
Okay. And now I know the governor came out on talking about maybe freezing any raising in taxes because we kind of alluded to the tax rate. I mean, what's your thought on, you know, I know, I think the kindergarten tax for all Multnomah County has a kicker coming in at 25 where it can go up. What's your kind of policy on that?
Yeah. I mean, we need to spend our money better and make sure that if we're overtaxing, that we don't do that. The taxes are obviously driving people away. If the newest numbers that we saw from the preschool tax that you mentioned are true, about 20% of the high wealth earners have left Multnomah County now, which is, which is staggering when you think about it. We already know that two years in a row, we've seen people leave in general and that our, our population is shrinking, which is not good for any city and county because that's our tax base.
And now we know kind of the demographic breakup of a lot of people that are leaving.
But now we know it's not just people that, you know, found another job. It's people that have, you know, that $400,000 and more income that are paying a lot of their taxes decided, no, this is, this is too much. And it's one thing if we got good value for it, but we're seeing this over and over where, you know, the supportive housing services tax for the homelessness is bringing in way more money than we were told as, as voters that would bring in.
Right.
About an extra $100 million a year, basically, in, in just that. And then also for the, the preschool tax, bringing in way more money than they were told. PSEF, the, the climate fund that we're having here, which is actually not being used for climate purposes, once again, it becomes a slush fund. It's bringing in hundreds of millions of dollars more than the taxpayers were told. I believe they were told it was going to be $30 million a year. And I think it's something like seven times that per year in, in taxes. And so, you know, I love Portland and I'm, I'm staying here. You know, it'd be much easier for me financially if I moved across the river. But, you know, I'm willing to pay some extra taxes as long as my, my potholes get fixed.
Right. See some of the benefits of the money that's going out.
Right.
Exactly.
And the effectiveness, which we haven't, which is what we haven't seen for the last, you know, it's been a while. So the other thing I was going to, you know, where, how, you know, in terms of some of the tax situation, like, so the metro's got a tax and you've got the county.
Yeah.
So when the counties, you know, how does that work together? Are you working with the other counties in terms of how to, you know, where people don't understand? I mean, city of Portland's predominantly Multnomah County, but when you look at the Portland PMSA, you've got Clark County, Clark County, Washington, but you've got Clackamas and Multnomah County and Washington County. How do those all work together? Is the same situation with the council?
Yeah. So the county has its own taxes, let's say property taxes. And we do need to revisit the property taxes. A lot of people are getting forced out of their homes, especially older people that are living on fixed income, but the property taxes keep going up. So we need to make sure that we're, you know, getting property taxes that allow people to stay in their homes and be able to afford that. But then Metro passed the housing services tax. So Metro actually divides that money between Clackamas, Multnomah and Washington Counties. And then of course, the city has its own tax base as well. So we have, you know, four tax entities here, all of them, including the state, that, that all taxed separately. And, and there's not really a planning mechanism for how those taxes are made. It's just basically whoever you elect in office can decide to put something on the ballot. And of course, you know, we can have a referendum where people or initiatives where people can put their own stuff on, on the ballot. So you have to be smart about that. One is use the money well. You know, if you can't use the money, then give it back to the taxpayers. And that's the problem we're seeing right now. They don't know how to spend the money quickly enough. There's so much, especially homeless service tax money, that the county, you know, all of a sudden surprised by an extra $100 million like it was last year. 100 million that within a couple of weeks they had to figure out how to spend as if they didn't know it was coming. So much money. And so the other part is, what's the best for our long-term economy? If we don't have businesses that are coming here, if businesses are leaving, but they're not returning, if people are leaving and they're not returning, if they're not, if not moving here as often as people are moving out because of our tax base, then we're just shooting ourselves in the foot. I mean, we're going to have fewer people paying taxes. So you can raise the taxes all you want, but if there's fewer people, it doesn't really matter.
Right, right.
So let's bring in good businesses here. Let's bring in people, let's tax them adequately so that they're able to enjoy living in the Pacific Northwest, but also not be afraid to save money for their retirement or the kid's college.
And what about, you know, what's something keeps coming up? I know is the accountability side. And, you know, there's been audits about, I mean, is there, is there just something you change policy wise to where, you know, I think there's a, I'm going to say there is mistrust in terms of, you know, we get, you get audits or you get a, you know, the, you know, looking at, hey, how the county spent it? I mean, how do we get some of the public trust back that, you know, is it just showing to say, hey, look, yeah, we did mess up. This is, we're going to change it, but in continuing that program? Because it seems like there's been no, and we've talked about it, how are you measuring success? What are you measuring for success?
Yeah.
And right now it's just been, hey, we'll just throw it here, throw it there and we'll see what happens.
Yeah. So we need to evaluate our contracting practices. And the media is catching up to that a little bit. I've seen some stories, you know, but that's, we're basically contracting, throwing money out the door again, hoping somebody will, you know, miraculously solve our problems. But there's not a follow-up as to make sure that those individuals are doing a good job. And one of the audits, the second audit that was performed on Joint Office of Homeless Services showed that if our contractors, one of these 100, you know, nonprofit, whatever organizations that were getting money, didn't meet their goals, some bureaucrat actually just lowered the goals. Instead of expecting people to actually do what their contract says, they just changed the goals so the person looked like that they were doing or the organization, but they weren't actually. So we got to have better contracting so that we're keeping track that the reports we have. But we also need to have transparency. You know, if you go to Joint Office of Homeless Services website or PSEF or any of these other ones, it's, it's next to impossible to determine where the money's going. And so we need to make sure that people understand, we need to have goals and if those goals aren't being met, that the money needs to go to those organizations that can meet those goals, because none of these contracts are getting canceled. And one of the things that, you know, I will do in my first week in office is call for a forensic and performance audit of the Joint Office of Homeless Services. That, the, the money is not being kept track. We don't know what's being used. Everyone is saying that they're housing a lot of people, but if you look in the streets, you know, that's not the case.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. And so, you know, Eco Northwest right now, it's a nonprofit that works in economics. They're doing a outside audit of the joint office of homeless services. I don't know exactly who's funding that, but they said it will take them three years to figure it out because the county is not opening the books for them. So they're basically going online, pulling down all the 990 tax forms, going to all these organizations directly, saying, we want to know what people are getting for their money. Those organizations in turn said, well, we'll only work with you if you sign this non-disclosure agreement. And so we won't have a full view on what those transactions are, but there will be a report. But Eco Northwest says, because we're doing this on our own, because the county's not a partner, it's going to take us three years to do this. So we need to, we can't wait three years. We'll have an extra thousand deaths on our streets by that time. What we need to do is do it quicker. We need to do internally. So if we elect three people that are practical, want to solve these problems rather than perpetuating those problems, we'll get an audit of the joint office. We'll know where the money's going. And if it's